Okay, it's recording, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, it's 6:03, yeah, I'm April 22nd, 2021, we're going to be unified school board, open session is called order. Burke Osborne, could you please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America. Stage rights, somebody else has to do it. Okay.
Where we just stand.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry, you guys, I don't know why, maybe it's my middle section being on the camera in front of a recorded session.
I'm with you on that.
Sorry.
My video. Thank you, thank you, moving on. There's no report from this evening's closed sessions, this moves us to 4D, which is adoption of the agenda. Dr. Vori, can you let us know what the changes are, please, for the agenda tonight?
Yeah, there's, there's some corrections, one is to the March 11 minutes. Somehow we missed a few words that are really important in the minutes, and it was a presentation from Dr. Mayberry regarding the integrated science two course and its pending status. So as soon as the course is a board approved, which was at the last meeting, it will be submitted, and once it will, and then it will be approved by, and weighted by the UC, so there was a few words there missing. And it's specific to, obviously, our processes for weighted courses, so clean that up, and, and that's reflective of the minutes. And there's also a correction to the board policy 5141.5. The word "for" will be added to the following sentence. In developing policy measures and strategies for suicide prevention and intervention for use by the district, that's where the "for" is going, the superintendent designate me may consult with school and community stakeholders such as administrators, other staff, parent guardians and students, so the "for" is what was added there.
I move approval of the agenda as amended. Second, but President Norrington, you're muted.
Hi, okay, well, thank you for going ahead and moving that, Jan. And, uh, member Perry for seconding that. Can I have a motion to job adopt agenda, oh, we just about, is there any discussions? Victoria, can you please conduct a board member role call, please?
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Armendon?
Yes, so the motion carries 5-0, this moves us to number five on the agenda, public comment on non-agenda items. As Mr. Khan looks to see if anyone wants to make a public comment, I'll read through the procedural comments, just as wants to apply to all live public comment throughout the meeting. If you'd like to make a comment and you're viewing the meeting via Zoom, webinar, raise your hand prior to the board discussion on an item you wish to speak to, and once recognized, unmute your microphone. If you're calling in, press star nine on your phone if you'd like to make a comment during the designated comment period, once recognized, should you make your comment? Press star six to unmute your phone. When you hear your phone is unmuted, please proceed with your comment. Speaking time will be limited to three minutes per speaker and 20 minutes per topic. Staff will keep the time and mute speakers for three minutes. At 20 minutes on the topic, staff will notify the board president with consent from the board, the time may be modified or allowed for additional personal comment. Lastly, board members are forbidden by law to get into discussion on non-agenda items, as all topics that we discuss must be noticed. All stakeholders may observe and/or comment. We value our employees and students' rights to confidentiality and do not comment on such matters. And as your elected officials, we evaluate all perspectives being before us, before we're making decisions, impact our stakeholders. Mr. Khan, is there anyone wishing to speak on non-agenda items?
No one has a hand raised at this time.
Thank you, since no one would like to speak now, we're going to move on to number six on agenda, which is reports. Now, we're going to start with Joanna, go, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, yeah, Soren's not feeling great tonight, so I'm going to add her mine, and then also a little bit of his. So, we had these updates for the schools throughout the whole district from March, because it was a bit of a break between our last meeting, so. Almara has welcomed back 18 new students from their virtual learning academy back to their four-person, four-day in-person hybrid model. That was March 15th. They have also had a fifth grade PBIS assembly to help prepare the students for the transition to middle school and learn how to handle conflict and behave the right way. They are working on a lot of transitional activities for the fifth graders. At TOW, TOW, um, the, this was back on St. Patrick's Day, the, their student council, they decorated the SO, SRO's car, and they had a surprise Irish dance from one of their teachers. Sounds fun. They're also planning activities for the end of the year for the fifth graders, they're hoping that as staff members are getting vaccinated more, that they will be able to do more things, they're staying safe and hopeful. At Thurston, their first week of five-day in-person instruction went very smooth and it was positive. They have received praise from students, parents and colleagues. That is very positive. Yeah, so, and then at the high school as well, we also returned to full-time on campus. It's definitely really nice to see all the students back together, even if it's not totally normal. And the teachers are doing a great job in supporting both the in-person and online students. So, now to what Soren was going to talk about, with our student advisory council that is headed by Gloria, we're working with the PTA to try, we're really trying to engage students and help them in any way we can, so we're really working with PTA and it's going really well. And also ASB, we have been really trying to do as much as we can to hold events, because we haven't really had any school dances, it's been disappointing, so we're working on a pep rally, hopefully socially distanced, and a drive-in movie maybe, and some sort of a prom, so there's more to come for that, but that's it, thank you.
Thank you. And before I move to B, if you are listening, you have a question on any of the upcoming reports of the operations of the district and school sites or the unions, please email the person providing the report. Email format is first initial of the person's first name and their entire last name at lbst.org. The district employees are experts in their fields and they can best answer your questions. And so B is bargaining units, we'll start our report with the CSC president, Ward, on the behalf of her union and LBST employees. Margaret, you have the floor.
Yes, good evening. Well, first of all, CSCA welcomes and is excited that our secondary schools are back in session. As we chat with some of our students, especially those that are seniors that you may run into in town, they're excited, they have concerns, but at least they're feeling that they're back and questions that were just addressed, like, is there going to be a prom, is there going to be a dance, will there be a pep rally? Are all things on everyone's mind, so I'm pleased to hear that. The, we are complete in negotiations, and I would like to thank administration and Assistant Superintendent Mike Conlon for the resources that we're using during this time. Lots of things are being discussed, this is a three-year contract, so it does take time. And we are also having meetings on reclassification, which is normal during this part of the year. And particularly, we're doing a deep dive on our clerical series, which is taking time, and again, I appreciate the time that is needed for these meetings from not only our CSCA side, but from our administrative side and their staff to work on this. So with that, there's not that many more weeks left of school, we're looking forward to what summer school is going to look like, and hopefully what the new normal is seen for August will be as we start back to school, thank you very much.
Thank you for that optimistic, exciting report. And next, we're going to move to the vice president for La Bousa. I know, will you please provide your report on behalf of your union?
Yes, hi, good evening. So we just had our third negotiating session, and we're making good progress as well, we're excited to be negotiating back in person, six feet apart, of course, following all COVID protocols. And we appreciate the continued use of the interest-based bargaining model, we find it very useful and successful in our negotiations process. Secondary teachers are settling back into person instruction five days a week, it was great seeing all the students back on campus and getting that school campus energy and vibes back. They continue to navigate the process of including Zoom students with their in-person students for live sessions, making sure both groups are fully engaged. We really appreciate all the technology and support that the district has given all teachers this year to make learning happen in all unique ways, allowing us to reach all of our students. It has really been a year of incredible tech growth for our teachers and staff that is sure to benefit us positively in our educational practices ongoing, thank you.
Thank you for that optimistic report, too. So we're going to move to C, the superintendent report, which is on the operations of the school district. For new listeners, the board delegates all of the work of the district to the superintendent with all the authorities successfully managed the district. For regular listeners, this isn't, there's a new section governance near the end of the agenda where Dr. Vori will provide a second report focused on the governance level. Often, there is tendency to equate governance with management, so we hope the simple separation in reporting might help better define the differences. And the board members will now report under the governance section, so Dr. Gloria, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Again, not to be redundant, but as mentioned, we have our secondary in-person, five days a week. Just a general update on numbers, about 70% of the high school students return to in-person. We've about 90% almost of the Thurston Middle School students returned to in-person. Again, students stayed home for a variety of reasons. We do have, still have some students in VA, which was year-long. And on that note, as we look to next year, it's important to note that Senate Bill 98, which allowed for full distance learning, will no longer be available for the 2021 school year. So we're in the process of determining what our process, or what our distance learning will look like for next year. There's more to come on that, and I know Dr. Mayberry will be continuing to seek out information and share our plans with the board, as well as with our broader community as we get a little more detail from the state. We still don't have specifics as to what the state is going to require or expect going into next year. The, our understanding is that it will come with budget trailer language, which the governor's budget, proposed budget is not due out till May 15th. So I'm really hopeful that we'll get more information between, between now and before then, because that's a little late for us to be trying to create plans for, for next year. But we are moving forward with our, with our plans, looking at now what are the current understandings that we have related to distancing, spacing, masking, et cetera. And we'll be working with staff and students to develop our schedules. In terms of promotions and graduations, I know it's a big topic, and we are looking to do in-person, and we're excited to be able to offer that. It'll be small groups at the elementary schools, the teachers will be facilitating those. Again, and simply not having so many people on campus at one time does create a challenge for us, so the, the principals are working with the fifth-grade teachers and the fifth-grade parents to determine the process for that, but again, it'll be staggered throughout the day. In Thurston Middle School and the high school, they've been meeting weekly with staff, including, well, including Jeff and Ryan Zeta facilities, trying to determine what our capacity is at the stadium, so that we can host an outdoor event. And what I can tell you at this point, preliminarily speaking, we will have an in-person graduation and an in-person promotion, both more than likely at the stadium. It'll be a little different format than we're used to, and it'll be a ticketed event for both of those sessions. And we're still working through the guidance. It, the graduation guidance from the Department of Public Health is very confusing. And so we're, we're hopeful that there'll be additional guidance, we're being told there will be clarification guidance. At this current juncture, it's, we believe we have a solid plan in place, but you are not yet ready to share it all out. We need to determine and ensure that we have capacity abilities there, and so Jeff has been working on that, and so we look forward to providing that information to our broader community and to the board as well, once that comes into a clearer picture for us. And certainly, last but certainly not least, again, I appreciate the support of both of our associations as we navigated this really challenging year. I don't, I know it's not over yet, I believe we have six weeks left, but I don't think anybody is counting at the school sites. I think, no, actually, probably everybody's counting at this point. It has been a journey, but we couldn't have done it without our staff, and again, it couldn't have done it without the support of the board. I look forward to our planning for next year and look forward to those opportunities to identify ways that we're going to learn from this year, now, what are the silver linings that we can take? I stole that from, from Joe, of it all, that term silver linings. There are things that we've learned throughout this pandemic, and we want to use this as an opportunity to continue to improve our practice as a school district, as one of our areas of focus, is always to get better, so how can we use what we learned this year to get better as a school district? So, again, much appreciation to, to everyone, and look forward to till our next board meeting, but until then, we'll keep you updated on all the different things that we have happening.
Thank you, Dr. Gloria, for yet another optimistic doesn't exist to be the executive cabinet members report, Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours to report on operations here department.
Thank you, President Armendon. Next week, we begin our mid-year audit with our auditors from Eid Bailey. It will still be virtual, however, we're going to take full advantage of our time with the auditors and talk through the new reporting requirements related to all the new one-time dollars we're receiving and make sure that we do it for accurate and appropriate submission, so that we get those done, not only on time, but in accordance with what we're eventually going to be audited on later. So we're looking forward to that, it is that time of year where we're starting to close our books, and as we work through finishing up this year, we're already planning for next year, and we're also in the thick of budget development, so. It's, it's exciting, and I'm very happy to see the, the return to the five-day week in person at secondary, that was a, a lot of work went into that with our administrators and teachers and classified staff, so thanks to all them. It was, it felt good, you could feel it in the atmosphere when you came on to the district office site, for sure.
I can agree more, and I'm glad you're excited about an audit. You're doing the right job. Mr. Colin, the floor is yours now for your report. Looking for everybody tonight.
Yes, thank you. As Margaret Water and Mary Ann Bonham shared, we definitely, negotiations are in full swing with having completed three sessions with each bargaining unit, and want to thank them for their dedication and time that we're spending, and then the care that's being taken to work through, through the process and definitely focus using the IBV process, the interest-based bargaining, it's been it's a lot to get through, but it's, it's, it's a lot crammed into a small amount of time, but we're looking forward to have things wrapped up by mid-May. As is typical this time of year, where my department is humming when it comes to spring recruitment, we're at, we have a number of postings already done right now. I have my preliminary staffing meetings with all four sites to determine exactly what our, our staffing needs are, so we can get those, those posted as well, and get those positions filled in preparation for next year. And then we did, it was actually a nice kind of a, I did enjoy getting up to Thurston as well, and actually getting out of my office and, and like, seeing, speaking around, being around people, actual people, as opposed to Zoom, Zoom heads. But it was, it was a great to start my day up there this, this week, and then we had a very nice celebration of the district, district office for administrative assistance day. Special thanks to our new PIO, Dr. Shelley Spassard, for helping to organize that for us, and it was a nice way to recognize the hard work that the administrative staff, administrative assistant staff do to really keep our, keep us, keep, keep the executive cabinet and cabinet members above, above the waterline, so we're much, much appreciated, and we're excited with preliminary planning in relation to all staff appreciation that's coming up in middle of May, so we're looking forward to having some, a nice, a nice staff appreciation weekend about the middle of May. So with that, that's everything from my department.
Thank you, they also keep the board of water, too, we appreciate them. Dr. Mayberry, your floor is yours.
Thank you. Yeah, our department, obviously, a lot of our work has been around getting the schools, middle and high school ready here for the, for kids that can return for all five days, and just echoing what everybody has said previously, how exciting it's been and the energy to have kids on campus that wanted to be on there, were able to be on there for five days. That's been really, really exciting, and a lot of the rest of the work has been around being things ready for summer and next fall. I'll have, talk a little more about summer later, but I can say that right now, we're kind of in the recruiting, the hiring process with teachers. We're expecting to put an announcement out by the end of next week with registration opening up by mid-May for parents. There's some really, you know, different classes for this extra piece that we're doing, some things around foreign language and math readiness and CSI forensics and maker spaces, just some really, you know, different classes that we've had in the past, so. Looking forward to sharing more about that. Our LCAP, we're getting on the LCAP, getting that ready, we'll bring that to the board in June. We had another LCAP advisory team meeting this week, kind of working towards, you know, goals, actions, some potential expenditures for next year, really kind of coming to the conclusion of having about three goals, one kind of related to college and career readiness skills, another one related to social emotional wellness and students having a positive self-identity. And then a third one around a safe, equitable, inclusive environments and school cultures, and so I'll bring that forward in about a month, a little more than a month. And then lastly, we're getting some stuff ready for state testing, as you may have heard, there's been some changes to that around accountability, the states did receive a waiver for accountability of state mandated tests. Knowing that not really viable for a lot of viable for a lot of districts to be able to do it, some questions around the validity of the test with so many different scenarios. So that, that was a requirement to do the science test, but also really helping us on our side, as we were already planning to do a K-11 assessment this spring with I Ready. And so we'll be able to do that, get quicker results that are a little more actionable. So we are getting that ready to, to go out to the sites, they're probably around that third week, third and fourth week of May. I will be assessing kids in that, the good thing is, a lot of our teachers have done it already. And it really will maximize the time teachers have with kids for the rest of the year, because the testing time will be half of what it was previously, so. So that's the kind of quick summary of a lot of the work we're doing, and just again, thank you for all the, especially the district and IT staff and instructional services staff and all the teachers and administrators out there to get things really opened up there at the middle in high school this week.
Thank you for that exciting report, and the summer school classes sound so interesting, I bet we can't all go. So this brings us to E, and the final report tonight is a very special treat, this is our principal report from Principal Joe Bydell from Thurston Middle School, the floor is yours, Joe.
Thank you, and good evening, board and LBUST team. And I should also say, happy birthday, Dr. Mayberry. It is a pleasure joining you this evening to highlight our amazing school and share some of the work we've done throughout this very unique year. Having been in education for, for nearly 20 years, from my early days as a special education teacher to various roles in administration, I have to say that I'm deeply grateful that my journey has brought me back to Laguna Beach and to Thurston. The support, resources, visibility, autonomy, ongoing guidance is, is hard to put into words. But what I can say is that I'm very thankful and appreciative of my principalship here, and I'm deeply touched by the character and values of the people around me, staff, colleagues and students alike. And it is, it's truly inspiring on, on what we've been able to accomplish with such a short runway. And tonight, I've put a few slides together to highlight some of those collective contributions and a few points about our work ahead. And a quick thank you to Ms. Weber, who's helping me with the slides tonight, if you wouldn't mind hitting the next slide. Much appreciated. Moving targets. And within that small runway that we've had, proud and honored to be a part of such a creative and resilient community that continues to overcome some of these moving targets that we've experienced this year. I understand that some of these images might be triggering, but in reflection, we've all become somewhat of an expert in COVID monitoring metrics at the mercy of some of our state and federal guidelines, and some of the conflicting points of view. Challenge to rethink our instructional models, ed tech tools, class sizes, cohorting, learning environments, slowly mastering doc counting and measuring tape, and sometimes shifting around like stray cats, and of course, those are just a few of the fun things. But as we all know, this is not unique to Laguna, but what is definitely unique, and I've felt, are the resources that we have and the collective commitments that we've made with those resources to be student-focused. In reflection, it is truly inspiring and makes you think that when these constraints are removed, what we can apply about what we've learned about ourselves to any challenge, problem or growth opportunity. We can truly be confident in our ability to find success based on many of the triumphs that we've experienced this year. But with, with that being said, less variables are always appreciated. Next slide, please. Like my fellow administrative colleagues, our enrollment numbers tell a small portion of the story, but overall, they've been stable with a light drop around winter break. These numbers also reflect our total hybrid numbers and include our distance learning-only students. As of last Friday, of our 554 hybrid students, 53 of those students remain in distance learning, and with each day a trickle, more students trickling in from distance learning to in-person learning. And looking at the other instructional model, Virtual Academy, we've had slight fluctuations from the high 60 mark to the low 60 mark, but fairly stable throughout the year. Um, all things considered, the number of options and accommodations we provided, depending on each family's circumstance, is something to be proud about, and I commend the efforts of our district and school staff as, as well as our parents and students for engaging each of those conversations with empathy, understanding, and of course, flexibility, where would we be without that? Next slide, please. Of course, those are the numbers, but seeing what this looks like helps provide an emotional context. On the connections we have made, the instruction we've, instruction we've been able to cover, how we've been able to band together our entire community remotely or in-person is what it's all about. That includes maintaining our optimism and integrity when in doubt, embracing growth mindset, knowing mistakes, mistakes were inevitable, showing empathy and assuming good intentions with others, monitoring the physical and mental health of our students and ourselves, and going all in with a good sense of humor, as you can see with Mr. Nelson up there. And of course, seeing examples of altruism in our everyday work. Next slide. With, with such a unique year, we knew our focus on multi-tiered systems to support also had to evolve with a primary focus on outreach, engagement and learning. We had to look at our entire program and system from our professional learning communities, the, the functions of our leadership team, the core supports that we provide for all students in tier one, those supports and supplemental supports that we provide for some students in tier two, and those highly formalized and intensive supports that we provide the highest need students in tier three in a remote format and now in person. And for academics, we monitor our essential learning outcomes and assessments to gauge student progress, and when needed, provide a teacher-directed support, whether that was whole-class reteaching or small group support time designated within our schedule to provide clarification or reteach some concepts. That progress is monitored in grade level and department-level PLCs, and often informed pacing of content or the need to explore in-depth concepts to develop further skills. While these cyclical practices were taking place at the classroom and department levels, our counselors and support staff were holding various academic workshops throughout the year to assist with organization, the use of new educational technology tools, adjusting accommodations and supporting academic and executive functioning skill development. For social emotional learning supports, we knew our student connections were critical to bridging that gap between school and home environments, and this took shape in school and home environments. And this took shape in a variety of student clubs. Reviewing periodic social emotional surveys and check-ins like our Kelvin Pulse survey that showed that students were experiencing some levels of anxiety around things around Wi-Fi issues, assignment overload. Speaking up in a virtual format and not surprisingly feeling isolated. And based on some of these periodic glimpses, we developed what we called student connection talks where we openly shared the feedback we received. The feelings students were grappling with in hopes of normalizing some of those feelings in classrooms. Empowering students to have open dialogue about their thoughts and challenges. And sharing strategies and resources when the time was right. From this came some light counselor and administrative check-ins with students that sought more conversation and connections. Essentially really bridging caring adults with students to help them kind of process some of the odd things that were happening around them. Yet knowing some students have different levels of self-advocacy. And they may not be willing to come forward, which did definitely pose a challenge for us when we were in remote. Was, you know, our counselors provided what we called mindful Mondays, which were sessions that went out each week so students and families could watch pre-recorded videos around developing social emotional competencies. And be armed with a few strategies that they could use, of course, when the time was right. And for our tier two, with the ongoing support and collaboration of our district office, we were able to establish our learning center, which captured students that were not responding to the remote resources being offered at the tier one level. And we were looking at attendance, engagement rates, academic performance, some of those specific subgroups of students and based on the highest needs. Open our doors for in-person learning Monday through Friday to ensure that students had access and the support that they needed to attend and be engaged. And we, we saw some shifts as we navigated through the different trimesters with different sets of courses and some teacher movement in and out with some of our students based on the need throughout each one of those trimesters. This was also a tremendous lift for students that needed that structure and that personal connection with students and staff at school. And we also had other tier two academic supports like our ELA Academy, and I'll share a little bit about that later on in this presentation. In addition to our executive functioning group, which was offered to over 40 students throughout the year where students focused on skills like organization, planning and prioritizing organizing skills, flexible thinking, impulse control and other related topics. And each of those executive functioning groups met twice a week for seven consecutive weeks. And we had formal academic and social emotional check-in, check-outs, which were done on a weekly basis with students to ensure that they were staying on top of their coursework or needed to connect with a counselor related to a social emotional need. And at the turn of each trimester and knowing that our students would be transitioning to new courses and new teachers within our PLC model, our staff would create what we called student passports that identified student strengths, areas of need and support and strategies that were found to be effective. This way, we were able to kind of pass those passports on to the next teacher so that they were able to maintain some of that momentum from one trimester to the next. And this, of course, was done both academically and for social emotional needs of some of our students at the tier two level. And finally, for our tier three supports, we invited more stakeholders to the table. Formalize individual student goals and needs and met periodically throughout the year to monitor progress and make adjustments when needed. Next slide, please. Here's a quick glimpse of what this looked like up to this point in the year. And we had 254 academic and social emotional touchpoints with students and another 45 as it related to mental health. We had 44 students that participated in academic workshops, also called the Masters of Middle School. That was a five series workshop covering learning styles, time allocation, focus, growth mindset and staying motivated. We also had 12 long-term counseling sessions around social emotional supports and 20 as it related to mental health. And SSTs and 504s, as you can see by the numbers, they were split there with unduplicated and duplicated numbers. But all in all, 489 students receiving some level of support from our counseling and mental health team alone. Next slide, please. I've also included a quick glimpse of our learning center and ELA Academy numbers with a few pictures capturing some of those highlights. And a few of those pictures are us celebrating the success of our students, whether that was found in attendance, work completion, positive attitude or overall effort. And let me tell you, those pizza parties can go a long way. And in the center picture there, we also wanted to find ways to celebrate students who may have went through some attendance struggles. And so, but found a way to turn it around. And so with some of those home visits, we were recognizing those efforts, offering some treats and sending a little love their way. Next slide, please. For our ELA Academy, this was the first year of operation. And considering some of the constraints of it being remote and being at the latter afternoon portion of our schedule, we still received a lot of positive feedback from students about their perception of the support that they received with improvements in growth mindset, reading comprehension, vocabulary, confidence in writing and spelling. And beyond student surveys, we saw Lexile growth in their reading ability. And one example of that was a student who saw over 100 points of growth over their Lexile in the given part of the year. Next slide. So what are our steps for 21, 22? Next slide, please. I've provided a little bit of this information in our board weeklies, but I thought it would be important to share our process regarding our self-assessment practices in the area of MTSS. And as, as you know, the California Department of Education has provided school districts with assessment tools to help schools with evidence-based practices engaging where they are all along the way. Our school is currently analyzing these components of what that assessment looks like. And in our leadership team and with all of our staff, we're looking at identifying areas of strength and potential growth points. And based on those assessment results, we're going to be using this accordion process that goes back to leadership team, to the district office, to vertical alignment between elementary and high school. And then back to our staff about the different growth points that we have, some of the practices that we're doing across the district. And what would be the next step of growth for all of us here as a staff? So really essentially identifying that next step or potential problem of practice and what we can do to improve our efforts and ensure that momentum and continual growth here at our school. Next slide. Here's a quick glimpse of different components within that assessment. Our main focus for this upcoming year is really going to be looking at the administrative leadership. And some of the domains within that assessment are really focusing on leadership teams focusing on instructional growth opportunities, being instructional leaders on campus. And then looking and exploring some of those MTSS practices in the areas of academic support, instruction, database decision-making, as well as maybe developing some advisory teams to look into behavior, social emotional learning supports and database decision-making. And how can we take that next step in and supporting our kids in both areas? Next slide, please. So some of the commitments that, that we're going to be making as we go through this process for next year and ongoing will be to ensure that we have additional ongoing stakeholder engagement, that we're making informed decisions and we're utilizing evidence-based practices. Ensuring that we have accountability, accountability systems in place and positive reinforcement. Looking for opportunities within our master's schedule to leverage some of those values and beliefs that we have as a staff. Especially as we reflect back on some of the silver linings this last year. Ongoing development and resources to support our professional capital and growth. Being very sensitive about time, staffing and the funding that we have available to help support that growth. And also just be very sensitive about the transformational change, you know, knowing that we're new administrators, making sure that we're really touching upon all of our stakeholders. Using a very democratic process to identify problems of practice and use data as a spotlight, not a hammer and assuming good intentions as we're building out our process. But most importantly, having fun all along the way. Next slide. And so that pretty much summarizes kind of a glimpse of what we've encountered this year and focusing and supporting students both remotely and in person and some of the possibilities of growth for our school as we go and analyze next steps. And look to support our staff, students and community moving forward. I'm happy to, I want to say first off, thank you for the opportunity to share this evening and I'm happy to take any comments or questions at this time.
Board members, at first, wow, Joe. Wow. But board members, any comments or questions?
Sure. I, I'm just really impressed with all of the supports and everything that you have in place. And I love the great names, Master of the Middle School, Executive Function Group. I did wonder, so for the Executive Function Group and they met for seven weeks, could you determine a change that was going to be lasting in seven weeks? How was seven weeks decided on?
So yeah, so the structure was, there was three portions of seven-week groups that went throughout the year. And you know, really it was kind of monitored through student surveys and just kind of sharing out what those skills would be and practicing what they would look like, applying some of the the difficulties that those students were experiencing in their classrooms. Then kind of getting feedback from those students and among peers with similar challenges among each other, sharing those results. But I would have to look at, you know, how that correlated with their academic performance throughout the year. I didn't tease that out, but I'm happy to bring more information like that next time, knowing that we are covering so much this evening. Absolutely.
Other board members?
Thank you, Joe, for providing so much information of what you've been doing. And I really noted the theme throughout of addressing the fact of new administration and making that connection with everyone. Why, as you said, all of your stakeholders, your staffing and your students. And by extension, it would be their families. Because that's really important when you, when there's a change. So I know, I noted that throughout. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, I wanted to comment. I wanted to comment on your slide that showed all of the different unduplicated contacts for counseling and academic supports and 504s. And I, I think it was up close to 480 or 490 unduplicated students. And I think your enrollment was close to 680. Is that about right? I just, I find that really impressive that you guys were able to provide support to 480 out of 680 or thereabouts students, especially in this year. I just, I wrote that down because I thought that was really important and telling of what you guys are doing. First off, and then second off, I've just heard so many good things and so much positive feedback about your role at Thurston. So I just wanted to say that publicly, everybody that has mentioned you or every student, every fellow parent just really have all had positive things to say. And your presentation really exuded that as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you for those comments. You made my day. I do appreciate that.
I remember Kelly, do you have a comment?
I think we made the right decision who we hired.
I agree more. We are so glad, Joe, that your path brought you back to us. So happy, your optimism, your empathy, you're looking for the silver linings and beginning people wrapped in that passion of education. You're a great benefit to all the stakeholders. I just have one question. What does SWIFT, what does that acronym stand for? I like the layout of that.
Are you talking about the, the fidelity assessment?
Yeah, yeah.
With schools, I can't remember, recall what the acronym is. But it is developed by the University of Kansas. It was a tool that was used to help guide leadership teams at school sites and and the California SONS Initiative, the California Department of Education had adopted as part of their tools when they went out and trained districts. And so, but the fidelity integrity assessment, you know, I'm happy to share a copy of it with you that kind of goes through all the different aspects of important pieces and components to have in a comprehensive framework at your school. And you know, some of the things that I didn't touch upon, but really about that and community engagement and leadership team aspects and, you know, diversity inclusive of policy, which really aligns with a lot of the work that I've seen being done this year. Really happy to have the tool and have had the experience to go through that training process. And I know that many of my colleagues have also had a similar experience and it's been very inspiring as we are all kind of working together, my fellow administrators, you know, little touch points with them about what that's looking out like at their sites. It's, it's nice to be in this with others.
Well, thank you for that. And of course you could share any of that information with Dr. Bora and he would share with the board accordingly. We don't want to get in the weeds.
School-wide integrated framework for transformation.
Okay. And did you work with this previously, with this program previously?
So in my previous role, I was a director of multi-tiered systems support in Northern California. And so when our school district back then was trained and that was one of the key tools that we had pulled out. And upon coming to Laguna Beach, you know, I had seen that the district office was also using some of the LEA self-assessment tools for multi-tiered systems to support practice to develop some of their LCAP goals in the past. So, you know, when you talk about Stars aligning, I was, I was very excited to come back and also see some of the work that was being done here.
Thank you so much. Thanks for answering all of our questions for the amazing presentation. We really appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. This takes us to number seven on the agenda, which is the information item for business services. Mr. Cullen, is there anyone wishing to speak on the monthly financial update for February 2021?
No one at this time.
Thank you so much. Since there's no speakers, Mr. Dixon, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Normandin. This is the monthly financial report that's presented at each board meeting. This is through the period ending in February 2021. Everything's tracking as you've seen in the previous reports, last one being December. Both revenues and expenditures are still favorable and that is based on the trend amount shown on the first page. The one change that we saw from last time that I would like to point out is on the second page, page two of 23 in the report. Is in the special program expenditures, the very first COVID-19 expenditure line item there. Both the year-to-date expenditures and the annual budget have increased by approximately 300,000 from what you saw in the previous monthly financial report. And that's because of one new one-time money coming in this year and expenditures that are still ongoing this year related to services and materials that we're using to replenish, whether it's PPE and the disinfecting services that are continuing through at least the end of the school year.
Thank you. Do any of board members have any questions or comments?
On the first page, under actual versus plan for the year 2101, I just don't know why, why is the trend in that one so much higher than what the actuals are projected?
Are you referring to the expenses?
I'm referring to the expenses, yes. I mean, it just seems odd that it's so high compared to, I mean, I know it's out in the future.
Yeah, it's anticipated based on the encumbrances and as we look to make additional purchases to support the second half of the year. In this case, it would be in preparation of returning back to in-person for five day, could be an explanation. But without going into the exact budget detail, I don't know it off the top of my head, but when it's looking at the actuals versus the trend amount, the trend amount is going to take into account those encumbrances versus what was actually spent.
Yeah, it just seemed odd as far as the, the amount of difference there.
Yeah. And the trend amount again is just based on historical information and as well as our data in the system, which wouldn't be projecting it's an encumbered amount that they're just anticipating will be spent by that date.
Thank you.
Mr. Dixon, if you, if you look at that and find something, we think here you get to Dr. Boras, it can be an update. You see something significant in there that caused that trend?
Oh, absolutely.
That'd be great. Anyone else have questions or comments? Looking, I don't see anyone else. Thank you so much for Thank you so much for the details. Thanks for adding the COVID line. It's very helpful. Appreciate all the work you do. This brings us to our number eight information items for human resources. Mr. Cullen, is there anyone wishing to speak on the third quarter report of the uniform plans for the Williams case settlement?
Excuse me, not, not this time.
Well, actually, I think that makes floor yours.
Thank you very much, President Norman. At this time, we have no complaints filed in the third quarter for, for the Williams case settlement. So easy, quick report.
Thank you so much. So this now leads us to number nine information items instruction. Mr. Cullen, is there anyone wishing to speak on the academic learning and support update eighteen month plan to accelerate learning?
And there are no hands raised at this time either.
Thank you so much. Since there are no hands, Dr. Mayberry, the floor is yours for the presentation.
Thank you, President Norman. Appreciate the opportunity here today to kind of share a little update on our current plans and approach to accelerate learning. And I think we'll have a little slide deck up here, just a couple of slides to share with you today. This is really an eighteenth month plan to accelerate student learning based on a lot of the things we've seen during this last year, the pandemic and school closure and hybrid learning, virtual learning. And so I really wanted to share kind of like the, the approach as far as being in stages. So this, this is set up as a stage of like what we're doing now in spring, what we're doing this summer and next summer. So this plan is to go through next summer. Anything we're working on this summer really is and we're thinking forward to what it might look like next summer as well. And of course, what would be like next year? And so we are also looking at it through the lens and Mr. Vidal kind of shared a little bit of this too, looking through the lens of academics and social emotional wellness. Although this one will focus primarily on academics. If you want to go to the next slide. These are kind of the, really the, the lens and the, and the framework that we are, we're building out the plan. And so in the first, on the left-hand side, you have assessments. It was really the, the how. Or I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the, the what, right, of what we're doing. And you'll notice in there a lot of these assessments, I mentioned earlier that we're doing I Ready K eleven this spring for all kids. And this really gives us that opportunity to not only give feedback to students, but really guide the instruction that's going on. And then a lot of the other assessments in there, whether you have parents and you may have heard like Dibbles and our oral reading fluency and our common form and assessments and different finals and like the secondary level that they've done in the past and are doing this year. Or the IXL program gives us good feedback immediately so that teachers can be giving them interventions that we can be providing some in-class and outside of class. And that's where the next, those two middle columns are, are around where we are going to do give them the support and intervention, right, in-class and outside of class. And so this year certainly we've had smaller classes and fewer simultaneous classes. That's allowed us to provide some immediate intervention. We may not have to wait right away. The teachers certainly have a deeper connection with students. One thing there that's listed on there that's new this year that the, the high school has done with some students that they couldn't have done in the past is if a student was getting a D or an F and wanted to repeat that class and do a credit recovery, they actually in some cases have been able to move their schedule around so they could have it at a later trimester and not have to wait till summer or another time to do it. And then outside of class, there's been some newer, newer ways of providing intervention for students, including during the encore days at the elementary level, as well as on some of those Fridays when the majority of kids are doing synchronous learning. And then secondary level, they're doing some individual, small group support after that course too. So they have those two, two courses that finish a little bit after lunch, typical lunchtime, and then they're opening up chances to do smaller individual group support and, and a way that they wouldn't have previously. And then really the last part there is around, component is around team planning and training, right? And so this is really like how we are going to how we're going to like provide teachers the supports, the training that they need to facilitate this, a really big piece. And again, this was mentioned a little bit earlier, it was around our multiple, our MTSS. This really targeted intervention around how do we help students, be very pinpointing what students need, where their growth points are. One of the things that we, we do each year and it's really a high, high priority this year is what we call vertical articulation or vertical planning. And that's done at the, not only at grade levels, but it's done within content areas. And so teachers are talking to each other specific time set aside to talk to each other around what are some of the things that they're seeing this year where kids maybe struggled with? Maybe they didn't get, feel like they want to spend more time on it and then they'll make those adjustments. They'll make note of those and they make those adjustments in the fall. And obviously some of that that can be worked out in the summer as well, but really knowing that all students will be back with us in the fall. As not all will be there in the summer, that vertical planning time is really, really important for teachers. That'll be coming up in the spring. And then certainly if you go to the next slide, I'll talk a little bit about, I mentioned a little bit earlier about a summer learning program. There on the left-hand side is what we've typically had some form of a very targeted support intervention, usually invite only. Some programs for students with IEPs, for English learners, credit recovery, so very targeted targeted programs and interventions. On the right-hand side there, you have these opportunities to accelerate learning that we're, that we're building out right now that I mentioned earlier, some readiness workshops, some enrichment. A whole range of, of different things that we offer mainly around that time in the beginning of August. And really that is there as a way to jumpstart students. And so we all know that this is obviously been a a challenging stretch for, for our staff, for students, for families. And so what we want to do is give a chance to unplug a little bit. We did this last summer as well around giving kids a little bit of a break before they jumped into any summer learning. They would do these programs that would really jumpstart the, into the following year. And we have some setup in math and some, some literature and language ones, some foreign language classes that'll really, we think will help, especially if some of the students that may have taken it in first semester or trimester. We've done orientations in the past, but that's, you know, also what we're going to be looking really closely at. You know, you think through the middle school of three grades of students that will have very different experiences of what middle school is. And so I know the middle schools, you know, really looking reflectively on on how do we transition all these group of students who have very different experiences at the exact same school. So though, we'll be looking closer at those. We're trying to set up some learning coaches, which we started last summer. Or they'll have some time to meet with families and give them, if maybe they don't want to come in or sign up for a week, they can set up some individual plans with them in the summer. And then we always, we've had our dual and concurrent enrollment options where students can get early college credit that helps accelerate their learning as they get ready for college at the high school, at the high school level or their, or their upper grades. We have our IVC that'll be on campus as well. It's a psychology course for the, in the summer. So those will be available and then, and head into the fall, after that really extending the instructional learning time there. If you jump to the fall slide, the next one, look, it'll look similar. And going back to those assessments like the I Ready, like we'll start some of those back up again, looking at inventorying students really on a more of a what do we, how do we need to immediately adjust things based on, you know, anything that may have happened over the summer? Is there growth or plateauing of learning in the summer that we want to adjust? Teachers are, you know, every year teachers are looking at the curriculum when kids come in and rethinking and replanning based on the students when they show up. And so we'll continue that. We expect probably more adjustments to the curriculum maps this year than previously. But the good thing is it's not a new practice for teachers. They make these adjustments a lot. And when you think of the, the learning progressions, right, the process of learning. Students are doing these building blocks all along the way. It's not like when they get to algebra, that's the first time they've seen any of these concepts, right, they're building up over multiple years. And it will continue on beyond algebra, some of these concepts, or if they're, or if they're working on their writing, their, their writing and synthesizing ideas. Right? Those build up as, as your building blocks, they spiral. And so some teachers, you may look at the kids and say, I need to kind of move backwards a little bit with these kids and then I can accelerate later on. And so we'll continue, a lot of that work, we're a couple of things that we want to definitely continue and Mr. Dixon mentioned this around having some funds for this, is finding ways to keep the class sizes smaller. There's been a big advantage to that this year, having all the smaller classes, some deeper connections with kids, getting to know them, being able to do some immediate interventions. Adjusting, adjusting the curriculum maps, like I mentioned earlier, expanding some tutoring options and homework help. You know, through our own staff, also hopefully some partners. We've worked obviously closely with the Boys and Girls Club in the past. But having those additional opportunities, not just after school, but also potentially during the school day. And looking at our bell schedules and how can we fit some of this into the school day for that additional support that they might need or that, you know, extended learning time. And then certainly we've done, really reinvested in the professional learning communities around those essential standards or we're calling essential learning outcomes. That work has continued. That was a big part of the work that staff was doing on that student free day in March. Right? We were looking closely at what is really been essential, what have we learned this year? What adjustments are we making for next year? Do we need to change our assessments? That work will continue. We'll have, you know, we have several days before school starts, the teachers come back on campus before, before kids, they'll be looking at best a lot of these assessments, so their essential learning outcomes and, and making adjustments, you know, during that time. So that kind of gives a maybe a quick overview of that. One last slide here, we did want to share, although this was again focused on academics. There's a lot of other things going on around social emotional screeners. You know, we've continued to do those, as was mentioned, or we have our, our social emotional learning curriculum. You know, assessing that, do we need to expand it more? Do we have to find, does that have to be integrated at different amounts that has in the past? A lot of access, right? Making sure that students have access to meal programs and any technology devices, hot wifi hotspots that they might need. Different referrals for mental health. It's been good to have this tech help desk has been really helpful for students to parents. You know, and things have come up and so we want to continue that work that we, that we started or really, I guess, expanded and got much more robust this year. And of course, lots of counseling and academic and college and counseling for students as, and as much of an individual basis as we can to navigate some of the things that have changed. So that's a very, you know, I guess a, a more higher level view of kind of some of the work we're doing. But I wanted to take the time to kind of share it with you and we'll be having some me probably by the end of next week, some sending something out to parents around some of the summer learning programs. They said, and then maybe, well, probably certainly by the middle of May at the very latest, we'll be opening up registration for those classes as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate the governance level of view there. And happy birthday. Anybody? Sort of questions?
Yes.
Member Perry, okay.
Happy birthday and thank you for getting so much in in a short time, Dr. Mayberry, gosh. And I'm so appreciative of all the work that's being done for readiness, for enrichment, the workshops, helping students catch up, helping our English learners. I, I also just wanted to talk a little bit about more, even more opportunities for our students, whether they're in middle school or high school with the what Capistrano did with extent, they amended their board bylaws to include multiple different community colleges. And as a result of doing that last year, thirty-five hundred more kids got credit in both college and high school. And they had over a thousand kids just do college credit. And they have, Capistrano has a special relationship with Saddleback, which makes it very easy for their students to apply. And I know that Irvine and Tustin have a very special relationship with IVC. So their students get priority and maybe someday we can tag on and get some priority. I looked online also at what was still open at IVC in terms of room in classrooms this summer. And I was looking at the online classes because I know many of our families don't really want their high school student maybe exposed to call it students in the college. So the, in the online classes, there was lots of room in almost on almost everything from, you know, online health to bio biotechnology, biology, communication, you know, film and media, sociology, Spanish, computer science, statistics, and on and on. So there are lots of opportunities there. Also, in the next few, in the next week, maybe the week after, the schedule will come out for the summer classes for CCA. And our students are welcome to those classes and both in middle school and high school. And the middle school is doing robotics, half robotics, half engineering STEM camp. And we're also invited to do one on one of our campuses if we would like. But if we don't, our students are definitely invited to go. And they'll do a morning and an afternoon session. And then there's at least six different classes being given at the, at, at high schools in Capistrano, an EMT class, a first responder class, a maker space. I'm not sure what the other three are, but it's even more opportunities for our students and just looking to even if kids don't take, or only a few kids take advantage of it, it's, it's worth it to give them that chance. And I love the idea of students being able to take classes like in Capistrano, even if they're offered on their campus because it frees their schedule up for electives. So then that kid, the students that maybe really love music and then they can't take other electives are freed up so they can also take another elective. So it's something that we might want to look at for our students to give them that opportunity also.
Yeah, thank you for sharing all that. Those additional opportunities are really wonderful opportunities. The the high school's been sending things out around different college courses and especially the I know more information will be coming out around the CCA classes, which is really, you know, we have typically each year, we have thirty percent of our kids are in some type of CTE class, a career class. So I know that's of a high interest. So I really appreciate you sharing those as well. So wonderful opportunities for our kids that are coming up. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, Chad, because I think that our team at the high school for a number of years has been making sure that students have all that information. As the CCA courses have increased and Anne Bergen was totally immersed in that and following in her footsteps, it's just continued. And so they they've been providing that information at the high school PTA meetings to parents to pass on if the students don't get it at school. But that whole team just works tirelessly to get the information out to students of what they can take through CCA courses, also at IVC. And there are intricacies involved in the relationship between community college and a high school. That's also a number of years old and it's a there's sort of a rivalry over who gets which district, but we do have those established relationships. Thank you. But.
Did you have a question, member Perry?
Well, I was just going to say no, we, we don't have the special treatment that they get for classes. That, like at IVC, the Irvine, the Irvine and the Tustin high school kids get priority.
Okay, so the, maybe a question.
That it's, that's the way it is or not. I just know that we have a relationship with IVC for the, for the high school students.
Well.
So maybe the question, Dr. Mayberry, if, if there are special relationships or something like that, if you would look into that and, and if there's something you need to bring back to the board, please bring it back about any of those special relationships.
Yeah, we can. I know the window for high school kids to sign up is coming up here in the next couple of weeks, so I can share more information on that as well. They're typically in that fourth group of students that can sign up for courses at community colleges. But that data is coming up as well. I can add that to that.
Thank you so much. Any other members have any other questions? For passport, I saw you're.
Mayberry or anybody that could address this. Is it typical that students at a certain grade take these classes? Perhaps say after ninth grade, after tenth grade, after eleventh grade, after twelfth grade, or is it split pretty evenly?
Are you talking about the, the dual enrollment class that'll be on campus?
The, the classes that member Vickers and member Perry were discussing. The dual, not the dual enrollment on campus, that one I'm.
They're, they're typically upperclassmen, typically after tenth grade year and after eleventh grade year are most of the students. Although we do periodically have some kids that are younger in ninth grade that are taking it. Uh although we do periodically have some kids that are younger in ninth grade that are taking it. Um. But the but it is typically upper class uh students that are taking it.
Aren't they also allowed to take them in middle school too?
Yes.
I mean, it's not very usual, but it it does happen. And the the CTE STEM camps for middle school are new this year.
Yeah, yes, they are.
Clerk Osborne, just to clarify so that there were kids as young as. Uh it was first grader kindergarten, so they would, they were doing a jazz performance and they needed the kids to go through, they go saddleback. And it was Star Wars jazz performance, right? But they all had to go through the. I don't know what it's called. I remember there's a form you have to fill out. And your principal has to sign off on it. So it's a class for the class to help. Uh get them all together to help their jazz performance, right? So but. So there's all kinds of things we do at the community schools, some uh that. Kids individually want to do and some that are done like because the teacher wants to do something, so. Are there any other questions or comments, Dr. Mary Bay on this um? On this report? Remember Kelly? Can tell if you're trying to switch or not. Sorry. Thank you. Good. Good. This can forget to tell me. Thank you so much and happy happy birthday. I know I'll keep saying all night long, but thank you for that report. Great. Okay, this brings us to ten A, which is uh business services. Mr. Cohen, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of change order request for the Thurston Middle School Field and Classroom Modernization Project?
Uh there are no hands raised at this time.
Thank you so much. Well, then we will give the floor to Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. Um first, I'd like to just um congratulate Mr. Zeta. He's done a fantastic job managing the project up at Thurston Middle School. As a brief reminder, um it entails currently phase one, which is the modernization of an existing classroom building that was. Fairly old and well, it's not always a classroom building. It was actually more of a locker room and restroom facility. Um in the modernization process, there are, there's a chance and it's. Usually almost a certain chance there will be unforeseen conditions. Um unlike new construction where you have a little more control. However, um thanks to Mr. Zeta's work and coordination of the project. The one change order we're bringing before you tonight is about seventy four thousand dollars of an increase in the contract, which is the primary bidder for PCN three. Our primary general contractor on that project. It equates to a one point five percent increase of the contract price, which is well below industry average for change order on modernization projects. Um it does entail some unforeseen uh conditions such as additional framing and replacements of framing. That as we opened up walls and um some of the building that needed to be replaced that you don't see when you're first looking at it. However, it also includes some enhancements to the project, which includes some exterior ventilation that was. Part of the restroom and locker room area. That will be converted to windows. That was not part of the initial project scope because it will be a full classroom facility. As well as uh expanding the existing concrete walkway. Um rather than being a five foot simple walkway, they're pushing it out and you'll see that in the uh breakdown of the change order. So that it can also be used as more of an outdoor learning space, provides more flat space for the students outside of the rooms. Uh with that, I'd be happy to take any questions. I know uh Ryan had provided a lot of detail on this and happy to answer any of the questions you may have.
Thank you. I was gonna say in the website. The LBSB website also has the project information too. It's so helpful out there too. Any board member questions or comments for Mr. Dixon?
I just, I just have a comment that um this is more my husband's area of expertise than mine, and I asked him about it and he said. That just to have a one point five in percent increase on a change order was great.
Thank you for that. Yeah, he's Ryan's on a great job managing. And and to the the point of the website, President Normandin. There we are still using our our progress camera that shows the daily progress, a time lapse camera of the project. And you can rewind it and watch the project go from uh. Uh initial demo through all the way through completion. So we. Something I like to look at daily and I just want to remind everyone it's still up there.
It's great. I remember Vickers, you had a.
So Jeff, some of that um like expanding that walkway, was that from some um on the site or, you know, analyzation that came from Ryan?
Yeah, in in conjunction with the, he does those weekly project meetings with the architect, the inspector and the general contractors. As working through the project and talking with the site and being able to maximize whatever we're working on in the project. They were gonna pour concrete anyway, so the cost to expand the concrete is much cheaper when you do it um. At the same time, and that's why it was in addition to the project rather than something that we didn't initially anticipate when designing plans.
Thank you. It's good. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has a comment? Question? You guys are in the little boxes again tonight. Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Dixon, for uh bringing us. Thanks to Ryan for all the work he puts on us. And keeping us on track. Um. Sorry, I'm going to my. Oh, I need to have a motion.
I move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Um Victoria, uh was there any discussion? I'm sorry, I know we all made comments. It's my sure there's no discussion needed. Okay. Um Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call, beginning with the stu student board member provisional vote?
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, the motion carries five zero. Uh we're now moving forward to eleven A. Which is uh options for human resources. Mr. Colin, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of the declaration?
Uh no one at this time. Well, we've lost your audio.
Maybe she's saying you have the floor.
She could very well be. So thank you, President Norman. I'll 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 take the I'll take the floor at this time. So yes, this is the approval of the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators for the twenty 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 one school year. Um this process typically happens in in the in the summer. Um it's been a process that we've taken aboard um each of our course with COVID. Sorry, um with with COVID, unfortunately, it was it was not uh it, you know, COVID took over as as we as we all know. Um but with that, um we've in this situation and specifically, we've been. We've been attempting to fill a uh we have a chemistry long term assignment and we've we went out to uh. To 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 find a qualified candidate multiple times, probably at least at least a half dozen times. Um and we were unable to find someone who's with a chemistry credential to fill this need. Um we did find an individual who's actually been um a long term subpress and been at the high school for uh for a couple of years with a math credential. But he does have uh the coursework that meets the requirement for this. He has he has twelve units of coursework in chemistry. As well as uh classes in chemistry for environmental engineering and physical chemical processing. So he is um he's he's well qualified, but because he doesn't hold his chemistry credential. Um but does have that coursework, we're able to um apply for this declaration of need. And it allows him to be able to fulfill the position through the end of this year. And again, this this is a short term. Phil, we had said some staff members who are out until um till the end of the school year this year. Um so again, we're just looking to to use this as a way to 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 get, have this individual complete and cover the course through the remainder of the school year.
Thank you, Mr. Colin. Does anyone have any comments or questions? If not, can I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
If Vickers and Kelly. Is there any discussion?
And and it's for two people, just in case something else happens.
We we want just just knowing how this year is gone.
Right.
One more to it, just just to cover ourselves. We didn't have to go back. And bring another action item to you. But yeah, so at this time, it's just the chemistry and we're keeping our fingers crossed that. We can finish the year with all all of our current staff.
Right. Thanks for thinking ahead like that.
Unfortunately, yes.
Fingers crossed. Any other uh? Anything else that needs to be discussed? Okay. Um. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call, beginning with the student board member provisional vote?
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne? Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, so the motion carries five zero. And thank you, Mr. Colin, for carrying on. I lost my mouse and my headset there, so thanks for just moving on. Uh this moves us forward to twelve A. Um, Mr. Colin, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of the contract for Assistant Superintendent Administration Services?
Uh there are no hands raised at this time.
President Normandin, can we take a one minute break?
Actually, if you take a five minute break, that'd be that'd be wonderful. If we come back at seven twenty eight, does that work for everyone?
Yes.
Okay, so you guys back at seven twenty. We'll see if we have everyone back. Okay, it's uh seven thirty and we can reconvene. So we're on um number twelve, which is an actual item for the approval of the Assistant Superintendent of Strategic Services. And Mr. Collins, since we went to break, can you just check one more time to make sure, see if anyone has a public comment on this?
Uh yes, there is uh there are no hands at this time.
I don't know. You'll give me just a minute. There's something I actually have to read. This, let me get to it. It's all within. There's a government code section five four nine five three subdivision. C three states the priority taking final action on executive compensation. The board must orally summarize the recommendation for final action on salary compensation and or fringe benefits. They'll be considered for certain executive officers of the district. The proposed contract for employment of Assistant Superintendent and Instruction. Dad Mary Berry is posted with the board agenda for this meeting. Along with a recommendation recommended motion that the board approved the employment agreement. And appointment of Dr. Mayberry as Assistant Superintendent Instruction. For a term through June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. On behalf of this board, I'll provide a summary of the compensation and fringe benefit provisions in the proposed contract. After public comment, this board will consider and take action on the item. The proposed contract provides the following provisions, which may qualify as compensation, salary or fringe benefit. One placement on on step three of the Assistant Superintendent's certific. Certificated management salary schedule, beginning with the annual base salary. Of one hundred ninety eight thousand five hundred sixteen dollars. At step four of the salary schedule for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. Annual salary will be two hundred three thousand two hundred thirty four dollars. At step five for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year. Annual salary will be two hundred eight thousand sixty two dollars. Those contract is subject to the same annual increases for earned academic degrees applied to other. Certificated management employees, as well as the same longevity payments in the same percentage. Applied to other certified management employees. Number two, the same health and welfare insurance benefits as provided to district certified management personnel. Number three, the two hundred dollar per month mileage allowance for the Assistant Superintendent's transportation and the performance of. The duties on the, on school business within the county, as well as reimbursement for his travel outside of the county, at the district allowed mileage rate. Number four, a fifty-dollar a month communication stipend in lieu of providing a district cellphone and plan. Number five, the district pays for the Assistant Superintendent's membership and professional organizations, including Association California School Administrators. And such others. He may participate in up to sixteen hundred dollars per year. In addition, the proposed contract includes reimbursement for the Assistant Superintendent's respo expenses incurred in carrying out districts business. As well as expenses incurred for him to attend conferences within California or meetings that. In his judgment, relate to the benefit and welfare of the district. Number six, Assistant Superintendent shall be entitled to twenty-five days of annual vacation without loss of compensation. But limits accrue to fifty unused vacation days. And upon termination or. Expiration of the proposed contract, unused vacation days up to the limit of fifty days will be paid out at annual salary rate effective at the time of contract's termination or expiration. Number seven, the Assistant Superintendent with twelve days. Assistant 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 Superintendent with twelve days paid sick leave per school year. Number eight, in the event the board elects to terminate his contract without cause, Assistant Superintendent shall receive severance. As severance his regular salary for the remainder of the contract's term for twelve months, whichever is less. In addition, he would be entitled to receive his health insurance benefits for that same period of time. And you know, Mr. Collins, I was supposed to read that before I asked you for, um, if there's any public comment, could you check one more time and see if there's any public comment?
Absolutely, and, uh, there are no hands raised at this time.
Thank you so much. Okay, are there any, um. Like, I'm giving the floor to Dr. Gloria.
Well, this is simply just a step two in the process. Obviously, the board already took action to approve, um, his position. And this is simply, um, as we do with our Assistant Superintendents, um, bring them on with a, with a contract. So this is, uh, being presented to you tonight for consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? And if not, could I have a motion to approve?
Move approval of the contract?
Second.
Question, any discussion? Sure.
Um, so I just want to make sure, like, any vacation time that he had accrued in his other job goes with this job, right? Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Comments, discussion? I was looking for you, Clerk Osborne, you're good, okay. Uh, Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call, beginning with a school board member provisional vote? And I'm pausing to see if that's correct since the contact, I'm looking for Jason to give me signal that we do still. Not used to it yet, okay, okay. If we could start with a student board member provisional vote, it'd be great.
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Bickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, so the motion carries five zero. And this moves us forward and congratulations again. Let's move us to twelve B. Uh, this is the second reading approval of the board policies and board bylaws. Mr. Collins, is there anyone wishing to speak to this? Is he being?
Uh, no one at this time.
Thank you so much. So are there any comments, Dr. Boyer, the floor is yours?
Well, this is, um, the last step, a second read and for final approval. We have, uh. Gone through this process and I appreciate again the board taking the time to review these policies. Um, I believe we have, uh, as we did last time, captured all of the, uh, changes at the previous, um, uh, meeting. Then that brought them all forward for second read, so, um, my, uh, belief and understanding is they are ready for, uh, board approval.
I, I have some. Uh, after, after looking at them again, there's two that I, I have, think perhaps something should be added to.
Okay, hang on one second, so you can, so I can.
If you could put a, um, board policy five one four four point one.
You asked me to put it on screen?
Uh-huh.
So it's when it was again, say it again.
Um, five one four four point one.
Okay, one second.
President Normandin, do you need a motion on the floor before we can discuss it?
Oh, that's right, that's just a question. Thank you so much. We haven't done motions. Thank you. Could I have a motion, please?
I move approval of policies brought forward for a second read after review at the policy workshop, followed by first read when all were moved forward on consensus. Thank you.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, thank you, number Kelly.
Can you hold on a second, I. Because I switched screens, so the motion was, who was the first?
Uh, Member Bickers.
And Member, uh.
Kelly.
Kelly, okay. Okay.
And then Member Perry, Perry's asking us to look at, uh, board policy five one four four point one.
Thank you. For bringing that up. Um, I, I thought our policy should, or our, our policy should reflect more, uh, um, what we actually do. And I know that. Beg your pardon?
You're just, you're getting feedback.
Oh. You're back. Okay, I'll try again. I thought our board policy should reflect what our actual practices are. And I know we, we have suspended students over, uh, school breaks. And I wondered, I, I don't know about weekends or summer, but it seems like it would be. Fair and transparent to parents and students to add that they, if they do something. You know, do something wrong, um, that they could be suspended for something that they do over a school break. I don't know about adding weekend for. Our. We have done that in several cases.
Well, what's happened with particularly the world of social media is the defining criteria is if. Something affects the student at the school based on something that has happened outside of the school. But we do not, um, track students. I mean, before social media, that was a case where if students were at a party on a weekend. Then we had some parents that wanted us to deal with that as a school basis when there, and that was not done. And this, what happens now is if the school, if the students. Feelings of comfort, safety, whatever are affected by what's gone on. Outside that school day and it comes onto the campus into the classroom, that's what those decisions were based on. We're not going out there and seeking student, um, unacceptable behavior so that we can then discipline to the school district. It had, it needs to be in, have an effect on the student at the school.
But Member Vickers, we did that. We, we suspended students for something that happened on a school break without them even coming back to school. I mean, by the time they got back to school, there was no.
I'm gonna stop.
Okay, we're gonna stop.
Stop it because. Yeah, this is getting beyond what we discussed, so.
Well, I, I think if we're gonna do it even.
Member Perry.
I think people need to be aware that it's can be anytime then.
It's not.
It, it does say that, though, guys, everybody, if we just.
Correct.
Breath right here where.
If, I can respond if I've been provided the opportunity to, I'm happy.
But before anyone does.
Gloria.
Before anyone else speaks, no, before anyone speaks, Member Vickers, what was your emotion? Because that's why I was trying to, I think, did, was your motion that we're, the motion to just approve without discussion, is that what you were moving?
I moved approval of the policies for second read based on the fact that they'd been through policy workshop and first read and brought to second read with consensus.
Okay. And that was to not discuss these, just to approve them, so we have to first take a vote.
Well, we can, after there's a motion, we can have discussion, but I'm saying, I just wanted to make it clear that we.
Oh.
That's the point of the process that we're in.
I was just trying to clarify that because if you would, if it was without discussion, then we needed a vote on that first. Okay, so now, Dr. Gloria, can you please answer the question? That'd be lovely. And thank you, Member Vickers.
So, if you look, um, again, and it's, it's permitted by law, but. A student may be suspended or expelled when their behavior is related to a school activity or school attendance. Recurring within any district school or another school district, regardless of when it occurs.
Mm-hmm.
So, there you go. So that is the explanation, that, just so we're clear, when an event happens off campus. And it impacts our students and that student returns to campus. And it's determined that has impacted that student's ability to return to campus in some way, shape, or form. Right? Hostile environment has been created as a result of something that took place. That allows the school district to take action. Okay, so that's, that is the clarification, so.
Okay, I understand that, but it seems like then that's enough. Then we shouldn't specify what went on school grounds when going or coming from school. I mean, that paragraph above is all encompassing. And it makes it look like when we specify the other things, I, I, I don't, I don't see the point.
Regardless of when it occurs, including but not limited to, so it's, it doesn't limit that. It includes these because these are the ones that, for the most part, are the ones that you, uh, that we encounter. However, it is clear that actions that are, that happen off of campus on a weekend could lead to suspension when, when a student, uh, when the victim. You know, ability to learn is impacted on school grounds.
Well, I think that, that's good, but it, does it also include summer?
Well, well, before we get to that, the, the reason those four things are listed is because that's what's actually listed in the law. This is verbatim, taken law and placing there.
I know, I went and saw the reference. It's clear. And Dr. Gloria, you said it better than I did, but it is, and I, I can't read this small print, sorry. So, I can read those highlighted things, but no. It's in there.
So, it, so if, if something happened over the summer and a student felt threatened and was worried about coming back to school. We could go back to what happened in the summer and suspend a student and not let them come to school?
I would, I would prefer not to get into what-if scenarios because it would be too, you know, there's a lot of layers to every type of incident, so.
Right, I, I just want it clear to parents and students that. You know, if you just glance at this, you see during those times and you would think, oh, you know, this happened over the summer or something, I.
I just want. The language is really clear, regard, I can, thank you for making it so I could read it, appreciate that. Regardless of when it occurs, I mean, it, that is clear.
Right, and, and Member Perry, there, there is language, I was looking to see if we have the court cases, there are legal, so many legal opinions on this and so much, so many court cases. You know, including the definition of rape and if something happened over the summer and how does that person then, right? And as Dr. Gloria pointed out, there are just so many different things, right? And ways to apply, and so that, that piece of, that you're saying not to put there, it's actually in the law. When you click on the law, so I don't know why we wouldn't just put that piece there and make it clear. Is there something else you'd want to talk about on this one? Besides that?
Just basically that students can be suspended or expelled if they do something basically at any time during. Whether it's summer, weekend, whatever, while they're enrolled in school.
I think one thing that's important to remember is that we have low suspension rates. We do look for alternate solutions and I think our district has a good track record with that, so I.
We do, and like you said, with all of the, the social media, it, it is more encompassing now.
Yes. And the law has changed to adapt to that.
Okay, so are there any other questions or what was the other policies, Member Perry?
Um, the other is BB ninety-one fifty. And this is just, and I.
Give Victoria a minute to pull it up real quick.
Okay, I, I talked with you, um, President Normandin about this, just even if these students don't want it. How, how can students get credit if they are the student board member?
Credit for what?
That could be a question, so a number, that could be a question for Dr. Gloria that under our bylaws, you would have asked him before the meeting. You were just saying you didn't, you just saw under the law that it was only about the fact that we get paid or we don't get paid as board members. And I, I pointed out that F has a devoting board of the school district may award a people member elective course credit based on the number of. Equivalent day, daily instructional minutes for the people's member service provided. And you needed to ask him the question about that before the meeting so he could have been prepared. That's what we agreed to and how we are going to behave under these bylaws and board policy that you're now asking questions.
Okay, my other, my other question about this is. Before we included a process for selecting student board, student board members, why is that not included? And let me say, I, I love our student board members. I think they're fabulous. I just. Um, want to know why we don't include the process for selecting.
The process is an appendix, it's not part of the policy specifically, so we have a, we have the process, it's board-approved. It's simply an attachment to this policy.
I would assume that that's a site-based situation so that the site might decide, they might reflect, they might evaluate, they might change the procedure. Uh, and it wouldn't need to be in the policy, the policy that would just encumber it.
Well, it did use to be in the policy.
No, it was, it was not in the policy, it was, it was an attachment to the policy. We didn't actually have it in the policy. When we created that, when the policy was created and the, as you recall, this two student board reps formally, um, brought it forward. Uh, for board consideration about the process and the board voted to agree to that process and that was. That isn't, is not part of the pol, is simply an appendix piece that attaches to it that we adhere to when, uh, we go through the process and then that's the process our. Current student board reps, uh, adhere to in the, in the process, the former ones did as well previously. So it is still the process that we utilize, um, because it is the board-approved process, it's not, it is not written in the board policy.
I, I understand, and that was like two, maybe two years ago. I was talking about before that, it was in the board policy.
Right. We brought it back to the board because it said as a, a pro, a process that was approved by the board, we, and we have that approved by the board in that process.
Okay. Okay.
Are there other questions on any of the other ones?
Yeah.
Are there any other comments or questions? Okay. And, uh, Victoria, can you please do a, a board member roll call, beginning with the student board member provisional vote?
Um, yes, I'm sorry, it logged me out when I switched back, so one second.
No worries.
Well, can we just, can we just take?
Yeah, just gonna take a vote by hand.
I'll handwrite it.
Okay. Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
I think you're saying yes.
Yes.
Give a thumbs up.
Read his lips. Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
You're muted, I think you said yes.
Sorry, no, I'm just quiet, I'm losing my voice, yes.
Oh.
President Normandin?
Yes, so the motion carries five zero to approve of board policies as presented. Uh, this moves us to, uh, twelve C. Mr. Collins, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of board policy five one four one point two one, and ensure medical. Medication and monitoring health conditions, five one four one point five mental health, and five one four one point five two suicide prevention.
There are no hands raised at this time.
There are no hands raised at this time.
Dr. Valori, the four shows?
Again, these ones were three policies that we had pulled separately for, at the last board meeting. We've kept them separate, simply because that's how they were presented previously. We've made the edits to, to the policies, as you can see in the notes. And we've included the notes from the workshop as well as from March 11th, and they're here for your approval.
Appreciate all that detail. Are there any comments or questions? And if not, can I have a motion?
Comments?
Good.
But not questions. So.
Well, comments or discussions?
Or questions are questions, so.
Right, she said comments or questions. I don't have a question.
Okay, let's, if I can have a motion and then.
How of approval is these two policies for a second read?
The three policies?
Yes.
Okay, have a second? Remember Osborne, second? Do I have Vickers, Osborne?
Kelly. Jim Kelly, I think, but.
Okay, what's the discussion? Good. Member Perry?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to bring up that the state of Utah right now in their legislatures is bringing forward having it be mandatory for K-12 to have training, not the teachers, but students on suicide. And, and some people thought that that would be dangerous because of the idea of ideation, but the studies found that that wasn't true, that it gave language for the students to be able to talk about, and it helped kids to be able to help other kids, and that it was, it was actually very valuable. And just bringing that up, and also that there have a, an app on the devices that the school checks out, like their Chromebooks, that lets them know if a student is going to a site that may be talking about a way to commit suicide. And I wouldn't, I don't know if we have anything like that on ours. And also about parent classes on awareness and prevention, not online, but.
Right, so are you asking three questions? You're asking, do we have laws similar to Utah? You're asking.
No, I'm just, great, now, it's just discussion. I'm not asking.
Now, that's that way, because I don't have information on any of that.
Superintendent can clarify this for us.
Ha, happy to. Yes, we do have securely, we have the same type of system that provides red flags to student when students are accessing or, or certain things, or they are websites, or simply words that they're typing in. It's monitored 24/7/365, assuming they're on our devices, which is the same thing for Utah. Something clearly you can't manage if you're not on our, on our system, right? If you're at home, not using one of our devices, you know, you're not able to manage it. But most of our students obviously utilize our devices, and so we're able to monitor those risk words. And again, our, our training is K through 12. That was one of the changes that was made in the, in the policy, so that we can do our, our training for our staff, all the way down into our lower grades as well, so.
I, I, yeah, I thought our training was for our staff. In Utah, it's for students.
I would just submit on, on the policy that it has prevention, intervention, post-prevention in grades K-12, shall include but not limited to, and pay attention to number two and number five. And I think that addresses your concerns.
I did look at two and five, and that isn't exactly what my concerns were.
Well, and then the other thing I, I did want to say was that on the third one that you brought up, or Dr. Valori, sort of about monitoring on the district sites. The district, you said something about parenting, the district also has parent education. One of those things they do is cyber. It's a cyber club?
Right.
And he teaches parents how to put in all those same keywords on their own network. And if their kid, anyone types it in, they can see who's typing that in as well. Right, so parents can do that. Parents just have to do the work of doing that. But there, you know, when there's a need, parents will do the work to do whatever they need to do to protect their kids. And, but there is lots of parenting education around this topic. Before Dr. Keller was hired, I assume there's even more.
Yeah, I was just reading about a, a group of parents whose kids had committed suicide, and they were wishing, I mean, one was even a nurse and had no idea of what she should have been looking for, and they wish there had been something. And I mean, that wasn't obviously in our district, but.
Our hearts all go to everyone who's dealing with a child, social, emotional, and especially suicide aviation. We've made it a board goal since, I don't know if before we were on the board, Jan would have to speak to that, but I know since it's been on the board, it has been a board goal.
And some of the, and we're doing a lot towards mental health and bringing it out in the open, which is really, really helpful. And what they're, they were getting at is the language that you use. So everybody has a common language.
And I think that is one of the gifts of of Dr. Valori and, and Dr. Keller of seeing how important that is, and I didn't quite understand when they first talked about it, and I still get it. It is very important to have that common language. Because there is in governance or in anything else, right? Having a common language of what we all agree to is important. Is there anything else?
President Norman, I wanted to comment that I thought the board worked really collaboratively on both this policy and on the mental health policy to add in the higher risk groups that weren't consistent. I know we worked on that, recognizing that mental health concerns and the rates of suicide are so much higher in our, in some of these at-risk groups, so that I think was a really positive change, and I like how we all worked towards that together. I also, I think that in, to address Member Perry's concern, in the policy, it says that we will be providing instruction K through 12 on that, and I think as a leader in providing mental health services to students, I could see that being done in the policy that we've just written in our, maybe on the cusp of approving, so. I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
It, it does leave an opening for that.
Thank you, Clerk Osborne. And I, I like the fact that we pulled these three out because we thought they were so important. Any other member have a comment or anything you want to discuss?
Um, I just wanted to kind of mention, I know this, the policy is kind of related to education, but I know with our Student Advisory Council and the PTA, I know we're doing a lot of great work and we're trying. I know it, it's not like out in the public or anything, but we're really working on trying to create something where students can go if they need help, or if they feel like they are struggling, because as a student, I totally get it, and I know it's a huge issue, and it needs to be addressed always, and it's hard to address that sort of thing, so. I just wanted to put that out there, that as a student and with Valoria, we're working on something, and the PTA is really helping, so. I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, anything else? If not, I'm gonna have Victoria do a roll call. Okay, before I could do this, to board member roll call, beginning with student, member provisional vote.
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Norman did.
Yes. So the motion carries five zero. And this moves us forward, I'm sorry, I lost my place. This moves us to the consent calendar. Mr. Collins, is there anyone wishing to speak? Consent calendar items tonight?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you so much. So this will move us to thirteen B. Does any board member wish to pull any items or have any questions? Oh, you know what? And before I did that, I did. Okay, so as we're seeing later in the notice that we moved consent, I just wanted to say we moved consent and into my fellow members, we moved the consent calendar, the end of items. The consent calendar is a process created within Robert's rules, which includes items which the board has already agreed upon for routine items that do not require discussion. Stuff in kind of reorganizing the agenda, enhances the physical agenda and the listening experience. The paradise, what we'll be discussing, we thought this bulk matter that are, that are addressed by the board made more sense at the end than at the beginning, so. That's the reason we moved it. So does any member want to pull anything from the consent item or have a question? I don't hear one, excuse me. Thank you. Um, then can I have a motion to approve all items, see to repeat? Well, he's fast tonight. Kelly and Vickers. Uh, Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call, beginning with the student board member provisional vote?
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Norman?
Yes. The motion carries five zero. Uh, this next section is new, it's governance. I'm sensitive new, I'm just gonna explain it this one time, not every time, but. Locally elected public officials, including school board members, are the cornerstone of democracy in the United States. School board members are entrusted with governing in communities' public schools. Governance has been defined to refer to the structures and processes that are designated to ensure accountability, transparency, responsiveness, the rule of law, stability, equity, and inclusiveness, empowerment, and broad-based participation. Governance also represents the norms, the values, and the rules through which public affairs are managed in a transparent, participatory, inclusive, and responsive manner. Governance, therefore, can be subtle and may not be easily observable. In a broad sense, governance is about the culture and institutional environment which citizens and stakeholders interact and participate in public affairs. Often, there's a tendency to equate governance with management. The latter primarily refers to the planning, implementation, and monitoring functions to achieve predefined results. Management encompasses processes, structures, and arrangements designed to mobilize and transform the available physical, human, and financial resources to achieve concrete outcomes. Management refers to individuals or groups of people who are given the authority to achieve the desired result. Governance systems set the parameters under which management and administrative systems will operate. Governance is about how power is distributed and shared, how policies are formulated, and priorities are set. These responsibilities represent core functions that are so fundamental to the school system's accountability that elected governing board can only perform them. Authorities granted to the board as a whole, not each individual member. Therefore, board members fulfill these responsibilities by working together as a governance team, with the superintendent to make decisions that will best serve all the students in the community. The board adopted by law to define norms and values, rules to govern within the parameters of law, but individual members have no authority. And so the authority resides with board in all its due. Okay, so this moves us to the board member discussion regarding resuming in-person board meetings. And board members just kind of remind how we get to where we are, and then we'll talk about where we want to go. We're that Governor Executive Order 2920 allowed boards to waive teleconferencing requirements because of physical requirements because of COVID. Under the new order, the requirements to make a physical location available for the public has been eliminated. A district can now comply with public attendance. And comment requirements holding a meeting via teleconferencing and allowing members of the public to observe and comment either telephonically or otherwise electronically. If a teleconference meeting is held, the district must implement a procedure for receiving and swiftly resolving accommodation requests under the ADA. Resolve any doubt whatsoever in favor of accessibility, and advertise the ADA resolution procedure in its meetings notice. The district must still notice that meetings are on normal Brown Act timelines, but must now also give notice of means by which members can observe and offer public comment. The district is required to change the means by which public observation and comment can be made. The district can set aside this requirement by using the most rapid means of communication available at the time, which includes posting on the district website. These changes to Brown Act compliance apply only during the time during which the state or local public health officials recommend social distancing. Finally, the order still encourages districts to use sound discretion and reasonable effort to adhere as closely as possible to the Brown Act. So we are gonna have a discussion tonight about resuming board meetings in person, what that can look like, so we can provide direction to the superintendent, so he can bring back, well, so he can bring back options and timelines in which we could resume. So, does anyone want to pick off the conversation?
Sure, I, I can kick it off, Carol, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Yeah, I observed the city council return to in-person city council meetings this month. I'm in April, I had a chance to look at the meeting on Tuesday, on April 21st, and just kind of look and see what they were doing. Following suit, I think we're both elected bodies for Laguna Beach. And I'm happy to share any of the specifics of what they were doing, but basically, they're allowing people to make in-person testimony with a mask and then exiting the building after they do make in-person testimony. They're still accepting in writing testimony or public comment, as we call it, and they're also then moving on to Zoom comments and allowing the public to continue to make Zoom comments, just providing lots of different options and ways for people to engage with their elected officials. So that was what I noticed. I did, in my meeting last night, as board rep to School Power, asked for some just general feedback, and some of the people that did give feedback said they like being able to make comments over Zoom. I think we have a slightly different base of interested citizens versus city council, because we have more often than not, parents, and they're busy in the evenings, maybe more so than the people coming to city council meetings. Uh, so they definitely still like that, so. But this conversation, I think, more is about, you know, what each board member wants to do. And I do think we might, if we were seated as a board, perhaps, like having Jim's technology issues resolved tonight is just really a blessing, because it's nice for us all to be able to hear and see each other, and I'm always looking for ways to more effectively govern with all five of us, so. That's, that's what I've got, but I'm, I'm really open to just hear what everybody's interested in doing.
I, I agree with Kelly. I, I believe that we should go back to in-person, and I like the way the city council is doing it. And I love being in the board room, and I miss you all.
I miss you too.
I like, since our, our teachers have had, are, have gone back, our staff has gone back. We're sending our kids back. I think it sends a good message if we go back also. But I certainly don't want to put pressure on anyone who doesn't feel safe or doesn't want, want to come back. And I like that so many people have gotten more involved since we've been zooming. And I wish, I, I hope we can do it both ways, kind of like city council is, and kind of be the best of both worlds.
And hybrid, yeah, and we have a different space too. Member Vickers, do you have any comments?
I, I don't know what happened at this last city council meeting, but I thought at the first time they came back in person, they all did not come.
That's perfect.
And, but I'm, I'm concerned about the cumbersomeness of doing both options at the same time. I agree with the comment, we've had a lot more people attend our meetings than attended meetings in person. And in, in one way, that provides a lot more people with information and an idea of what board business is all about. And it seems that I think it, it goes in connection with having the meetings be live-streamed. I mean, the Zoom is similar to that, and so there's a benefit to that, as, as we said earlier, with some of the things in, in, on the campuses, there are things that have been positive, and I would say to me, having more people involved in our meetings has been a positive. I just have some mixed feelings right now about the layout of the boardroom and how, how the staff can, can do that and still accommodate the distancing requirements. There are, I mean, I think we have, our participants, our panelists are 13. So everybody couldn't be in the same room. But I, I'm, I'm certainly open to having the options brought forward, and also what that would mean with staff time, staff work to, to make that possible, especially with the mention of doing, of not just going back to in-person meetings that are live-streamed, but providing the, the Zoom at the same time.
Well, and then here's my second question and direction then is that if we don't all fit in the space, if we left the space, we didn't hybrid, and some of us, you know, either in hybrid or rotation, or people's preferences, or whatever it might be, in some rotation of being in that space, and we left it, we don't have the. in some rotation of being in that space, and we left it, we don't have the ability to straight, well, I guess I want to know if we have the ability to stream. I'm not sure now with technology changes, then maybe there might be somewhere, but when we purchased our equipment, the stream, we purchased it for that room. And so, because it was much more expensive to purchase other equipment, yeah, I remember what we talked about, and we're like, for that cost, it didn't make any sense, pre-COVID conversation. So there might be something, but I'd like the superintendent to see, because what I don't want to give up is the ability for people to be able to comment the way they've been able to comment, and to be able to participate the way they've been able to participate. And I don't want to have to cut down our panelists. I guess I'd rather have people make a choice than to say certain people can't come, because it's just about physical requirements, it's not about, we want everyone at the table, we want to hear everyone, it's not about that, I just want to make sure we can accommodate everyone safely, so. If, if the majority is willing to not Zoom and to move to another space, we need to know that. And if the majority won't, isn't considering that, then it really is looking at the space we have, and that's what I really need to.
If we moved to another space, then we can't do live streaming.
Right.
And I really think we made a commitment to that, so I wouldn't want to move to a space where there would be no live streaming and no Zoom. Because then there's really, we're losing an audience there, or we're losing public participation.
I, I agree, could, is there, can we do Zoom without the live streaming?
Wait, that's something we could find out. That's what we can ask, that's what I'm saying, I just want to know first how important it is in the interim, right, wherever the transition, what's, what's most important? And that's what, so that we can give them clear direction. So it sounds like definitely live streaming, Zooming, like being able to connect online is most important, if that's what I'm hearing, there's three, I don't know about the Kellys. If that's most important or not to you guys. Or if it's being in person is most important, so.
I think that the two, being, being able to provide public participation in all different formats, I don't think we can go backwards, I don't think we can take the ability for people to Zoom in away. But I think that's equal with the five of us sitting as a board together and learning to govern effectively together in a room, assuming nobody has ongoing health concerns. I think that's first and foremost, do any of us have health concerns, and maybe that's not need to be on the public format here, but I think.
What?
Looking at.
We shouldn't define it as health concerns, just people have options of coming or not, I think we should leave that part open, not why. So we're not, yeah.
Okay, I see what you mean, so I think those two are of equal importance to me, to be honest.
Okay. Jim?
I agree.
Is it equally important to you?
Yes. But, but also not having the ability to meet together, I think is really important, but if it's not comfortable for everyone, I'm okay with that.
Okay. So if I, Dr. Lori, if I, I'm gonna try to do my best to summarize this, then the directions we would like is for you to provide us options and timelines for resuming in person, where we can all thirteen of us have an option to be in person together, and we can still provide live streaming and/or Zooming, however, whatever the technology term, not getting into the weeds there, so that we can provide what we're providing now, so we're moving forward with providing more participation and access.
I'll do my best.
Is that helpful? Okay.
Okay, I can tell you right now that we can't all fit, we have already done the layout in the boardroom, we, we can't, and there's fourteen, and we can't fit. So that's problem one, with six feet of social distancing, and that is the one location, we have our cameras. So, you know, that's, that's pretty straightforward, you know, so we, we have done some layouts where, you know, clearly, if we had less people in the space, obviously, we could fit more people, speakers, again, similar to what what city council is doing, having them have to wait outside in between items, again, and then that kind of poses a little bit of a problem of, so what, how do they know when the items are available, then, you know, how can they listen to other discussions, you know, at the same time? So there, there's some issues around that that we would have to consider. So I, I hear what the intent is, I can bring back a couple of ideas to, you know, potentially, you know, for your consideration at the, at the main meeting. But, you know, just want to be clear right now, so if there's some other direction, we can't all fit. If you wanted everybody who's here to be able to be present in, in the boardroom, that Dr. Kelly's currently sitting in.
Could you give us feedback of how many people could fit, and even then we can look at a rotation or something, I mean, it means that we're still Zooming other people in, right, so that would have to work. So some would be on screen, some would be live, and then a little comment could be on ten, ten people could fit.
Well, for me, though, asking what I, I mean, mentioning what I mentioned is, we need to get one of the options will give us information of what's the feasibility, the practicality of doing both. So, you know, if we're gonna go to in the boardroom live streaming and you're still going to do Zoom, I mean, that's a lot of technical work. And as far as the timelines, I mean, we heard tonight about how busy our leadership has been, how busy they are with budget planning for next year, with negotiations, with all the curriculum and the eighteen-month learning plan that I want to make sure that Dr. Lori feels comfortable with telling us, as we've said before, with anything that the board suggests, that it fits as far as the time that they have to address it.
That's correct, so, so maybe then we're looking at that information coming back on the agenda for June, the second meeting in June, when school's out, and not that they're still not planning and stuff, but the planning shifts, right, to more implementation of the plan, so would that be a better timing? Or we can leave the timing to, we can leave the timing to Lori, yeah, and, and Dr. Lori, you can bring it back, and the correct timing that works. We don't want to labor you with it. We just want to make sure that we can hear Jim, what this is all about.
No, we recognize, and, and, you know, we're not aware, things may change, right, we, that's for the piece, so as we know for a fact that the framework is, well, I shouldn't say that, let me back up, I won't say fact, because there were no CDPH rules, but we believe that come June fifteenth, that the framework will be, won't, will no longer exist, red tiers, that sort of thing. And instead, it'll simply be OSHA guidance. And so there may be some more flexibility that we might be able to fit more people in a space with additional mitigating circum, you know, factors, right, so that we could consider that. So what staff, we can, we will do is spend some time looking through the guidance, looking through potential ways to mitigate if the space was to have more people, to at least get everybody who's currently here, who wishes to be in person, in person. We believe, we, we know we can do the Zoom using our switcher and our camera that's in the boardroom. We know that's, that's capable, it's probably the easiest place to start would be to try to find a way to utilize our board space, because it is built for that. Then, you know, trying to find a relocation that, you know, we would have to bring cameras in, that sort of thing, so the, the issue would be volume and those sorts of things, we know we have that set up in, in our boardroom, so we'll start from there. You know, Mike Morrison and I had already had this discussion, as well as Victoria, and bring back something, you know, hopefully at the May meeting, so that we can talk a little more about it. And at that time, again, we, you know, we expect things will continue to evolve with the pandemic, understanding, you know, the, the rules around vaccines, and if people have vaccines, they're, they're changing the, the locations and spaces that you need to be a part. If you go to a Dodgers game and you're vaccinated, you have your own special section, and you're sitting right next to other people, so, you know, there are, there are ways that I think we can look to mitigate, and, and so we'll, we'll know more, but I expect in May we'll be able to bring something, hopefully for your consideration at a June meeting.
That's great.
That works.
Thank you. Yeah, perfect. Thanks to everyone for that discussion and sharing. Well, okay, so this moves us to fourteen C, which is board member reports. Our board appreciates the guiding principles of the Brown Act, a set of laws for transparency and equity for all stakeholders. Board members can report to their fellow board members on items that fall within governance, including activities, events, meetings they've attended and/or participated in within the scope of their role as board members for LBSD. We apply the same standard for the, from the Brown Act that applies to public testimony, which means we hold ourselves to report that is three minutes or less. Horrible at this, but I'll do my best. And Member Vickers, you have the floor first.
Okay, well, obviously, we're gonna be brief, but there haven't been many things that I've attended, I attended PTA Council at the beginning of the month. And again, they, I reported, and they are now having me give them a written report, which is fine, so that they can put that in their minutes. And I just share the reports of what we did at our meetings and our upcoming meetings. And particularly talking about the study session we had on the equity issues, because I think that's a key work that we're doing at this time. I listened in at the high school PTA meeting, and they, Jimmy Azadian, on request, brought back Lynn Gregory and Angela Ship, and they gave much more detailed information on not just college application, but helping parents to understand the difficulty students have now in applying to schools with massive numbers of applications and limited slots with the schools not taking that many students, and so how to help their students find a school, find a fit for themselves, but also to deal with the fact of when they don't get the acceptance. So it was, it went on for a long time, they are really, the parents are really eager to get this information and, and the help and the help for them and helping their students navigate this, the process. And then I just, I did want to make a comment that I didn't make it the consent calendar, I'm just extremely supportive and really glad that we're expanding our early education program. That's vital work, and I think we're going to, we're able in our district to move forward with that and to, and to be a leader in that area. Thank you.
I agree more. Member Perry, you're next.
Okay. I also attended the high school PTA meeting, or listened in like Jan, and one of the things I really liked was seniors gave their top ten advice, and number one was get a job as in the summer, because of all the things that will teach you about responsibility and time management, et cetera. And another one was take a community college class, which was kind of what I'm advocating for, and hoping that we can change so we can allow students to have more credit, credit in both areas. Then I also attended the endowment meeting, and we are so lucky to have them, they're so on top of all the finances. They they thought they might lose money this year, and that the beginning, it wasn't looking as good, but boy, the financials are looking really good now. They are looking to maybe try to move into being a, instead of being a nonprofit, into being a charitable trust. And they talked about the student directory coming out, and that suggested we watch, we, we watched Bad Education, the movie on Netflix, and we're in good hands, they're doing great, that's it.
Thanks for your report. And, Member Kelly, the floor's yours.
I would first wish everyone a happy Earth Day. It was in nineteen seventy that I was doing my student teaching on the first Earth Day in Roark, Pennsylvania. And I was happy to be here at the district and see all the kids coming back to school, and the parking lot was full. So I guess those cars aren't helping the earth, but I'm glad that the kids are back. I, I then happened to be at Ralph's, and I saw the kids all there, and I was talking with them about how's, how's school going. They're happy as could be, they're so glad to be back on campus with their friends, and they were wearing their mask and being very respectful. My partner and I agreed on who would be the recipients of the lesbian, gay, and bisexual and transsexual awards that are going to be given out. I hope it's going to be a live event, because the first live event that School Power did on giving out all those scholarships was just very impressive. I was real disappointed with last year's Zoom on, I, I must say. But I've also just, I'm so impressed with the quality of the students who applied, and I'm also impressed with the quality of the students that I keep meeting around the city. A lot of our kids are working now, waiting tables, and doing all types of different, different things, and so it's, it's, it's just been a pleasure to talk with them about, about school and diversity, and, and what's, what's going, what's going on. And I'm just happy to be on the board, thank you.
Thank you so much. And that brings us to Clerk Osborne.
All righty, good evening. My report includes, again, a big thank you, and wanted to say that I enjoyed the board study session that we all got to participate in with educational elements on March twenty-fifth, I really found that helpful. And loved that we all had the same information, and we're kind of on the same footing with that, so I really appreciate the opportunity. I also participated in the CSBA Legislative Advocacy Week on March nineteenth with Dave Min, I found that interesting as well, it's always neat to see what our fellow board members are, are doing and are interested in around the county. I served as Jim's alternate at the Joint Fiscal Management Committee meeting on March twenty-ninth, I found that very engaging as well, meeting with staff and cabinet, and looking at the financials. I attended the March Thurston PTA meeting and the April TOW PTA meeting. COW PTA was working on some really neat staff appreciation plans, and I always like hearing about that stuff. I also attended the April School Power Foundation meeting on the twenty-first, I think that was last night, it's all a blur. Some of the things that, that were of note, they are presenting their new slate, so they were doing their annual election meeting. They'll have a new slate of trustees, they're on a three-year trustee cycle, and also electing their new executive board. That all took place, and really exciting to share that they have their Barefoot Classic, the golf tournament back on the calendar, and I heard it sold out within minutes, so that was just really neat to hear and see. I also attended two webinars from the Learning Policy Institute on Accelerating Learning, really good sessions, one was on high-quality tutoring. I've just, I've seen such a big impact on some of the district has been doing this year with that afternoon session, and was really interested to hear what the research was saying, a lot of good meta-analysis that was shared. And then I listened to another one on strategies for summer learning and found what they were saying, just to be really interesting, some school districts were even going away from computer-based learning over the summer and trying to really focus on high-interest, project-based learning to, you know, to do something different and really peak motivation for learning this summer and next summer. And I know Chad's been viewing some of those same resources and really tuned in with that work. And lastly, to comment on Jim's comment in honor of Earth Day, I looked at some of the CSBA climate change task force work, I've been beginning to review some of their sample resolutions on what, you know, what schools and boards can do to address climate change, and maybe in a future policy workshop as a board, we can have some discussions on that, but just wanted to make note again, happy Earth Day, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll jump in on Earth Day then, yes, happy Earth Day, and I would, I look forward to also discussing what we could do around climate change beyond what we're already doing. That'd be great, and I didn't realize they had policy work on there, I've been so focused on equities, that's wonderful. I attended various legislative weeks, or legislative weeks by various organizations, and I can't wait, really, with all districts should be funded, like our district is funded, and that would really minimize those legislative weeks. I'm deeply touched by all the stakeholders in this district that have worked to provide social emotional support, excellent education, no matter what is happening in this world, and the excitement of secondary and, and the kids in general is really felt through the community. They're excited to be back in different energy levels, so it's great to see and feel. For our, for our May meeting, this governance section is going to bring back things that you want to talk about. And so there'll be, you know, I think I have two to five items, probably two will come back, but just so people, so everyone kind of understands what the space is for. So one would be, as we look at board policies, there are some of the simple things, like they could change heat if they were there, or, you know, update legal reference, as long as it doesn't change the policy. If they're, if we change a person's name in a policy, instead of identifying them in an identified position, simple things like that that aren't changing the policy, the law, it's just changing, you know, simple fixes, we could bring something back in this space. that aren't changing the policy, the law, it's just changing, you know, simple fixes, we could bring something back in the space about that, right? And then we just talk about that and give direction. So this space is for those things we want to discuss together, like we did tonight about going back in person. So whatever those things are that come up, that really is governance level, which we're talking about as government, this is the space for it. Because it's not taking action, it's us having discussion, it's on the agenda, so it's clear and anyone can come comment on it. And then we can have a discussion about it and give direction, so.
Carol, I thought, I thought the difficulty with what we had before was getting any discussion on anything that was not agendized. So I'm not, I understood the change for this is just specifically a report and that we we cannot discuss among ourselves, even if it's thing of a legal change in a policy, that that would still need to be an agendized item.
That is what I'm saying, that's what the space is for. That's what this space is for.
In other words, if you bring up a policy and say, I would just, you know, I'm aware of something in this, and then we would have discussion on it, that we can't have discussion on it, because it isn't in there prior to you mentioning it.
Right, and we're having a discussion right now, which we can't do, but what I'm saying is that's what this place is. So for fourteen B, we discussed, or remember discussion regarding resuming in person board meetings. Because Member Kelly wanted to bring, Clerk Kelly wanted to bring that forward. Clerk Osborne, I'm sorry, I just want to collapse the TV, it's stuck in my head. But Clerk Osborne wanted to bring that forward and have a discussion on it. And so this is where that goes, so if there's something that we want to discuss, my report back to you is that this is that place to create, because I attended all the CSBA training.
It still has to be done ahead of time, when you just referenced Osborne bringing it ahead of time, it has to be brought ahead of time, correct? And what I'm discussing is this section, which you put on the agenda for tonight, so it is agendized.
Fair, but you guys are correct, I'm just in my report section, and I was just reporting an example of something that could be put here. I was just gonna give a few examples, just so everyone had a sense of what could go in this space. So that was what I was, I was trying to accomplish in my report.
I understand that, but I'm just making sure that it has to be communicated ahead of time, so it can be titled in here.
Yes, it has to be, yes, it has to be agendized item for us to have a discussion on. And we will, you know, give it a letter, we'll have a discussion, and this is that space for us to have governance among each other. Because outside of that, we can't talk to each other about things, this gives us a space to do it in the guidelines of the Brown Act.
I understand, so actually, this is opening it up to a wider field, as long as the request is put in to be on the agenda. So there'll be no.
As long as it's around governance.
When it goes, it would just automatically.
We still have to identify which agenda put on during agenda policy, like which one works for the meeting, but this is where it would go. So if there's something, if we wanted to talk about how the board, a communication from the board, this is where that would go. These different topics that we've had a hard time trying to figure out, how do we discuss them? This is where we discuss them. We put them here on the agenda, we submit them, just as we submit anything for the agenda, you submit it to the superintendent, copy of the president, that you would like in the governance section on the agenda, you want to talk about X. And then we're giving consensus on X.
The cause of difficulty with the one before, which we thought was a solution to doing that, so.
Because it wasn't agendized.
But this section then is, since it was identified, we missed public comment. And that was the, that was one of the heart of the problems with what, way we did it before. So when we had this number B, we did not have public comment on that.
Oh, you're correct.
Pardon me?
You are correct, we need to put public comment there.
Okay.
That is correct, you're absolutely correct, we did not have public comment on B, and we should have had public comment on B, you are correct. I missed that. Hold on me, but we will have public comment on that, we won't have public comment on reports, because reports under the Brown Act, you don't have public comment. So, but we will on whatever those items are, so we are agendizing them, so we want to speak about them, we'll notify the public, and then we can have a discussion and give correction to Dr. Lori. Okay, so I'm in reports, and we haven't had public comment, I'm move on, I won't give any more examples. Because now I feel like I've stepped over line, thank you for that, Member Vickers. The other thing I've been doing, and I'm, I should just wrap up my time, but I've been working on equity. And there's all kinds of things I was gonna share with you guys on equity. And Dr. Lori, you just give me a nod if it's okay, I could just share them with you, and you could share some of the books and stuff, okay, good. And I won't go through all of it. I will say, Tim Wise, if you search for him on the internet, I found him absolutely amazing. And Ty, Ty Seidel, Robert Lee and me, amazing, and the rest of y'all, I'll send over to Dr. Lori, so you guys can get the information. And with that, I'm gonna knock mine up and move to D, to the superintendent report. Or your, that's a board.
I'll keep it brief. We've been tracking a couple of bills in the legislature, two in particular, and I've been in contact with Senator Min's office about them. They're specific to some concerns we have, we being the superintendent of Storms County regarding retention. And our our sense that there's an approach by the legislature as a one-size-fits-all for for retention and for allowing students to train, change their grades, to pass, fail. There are implications for things like that, that I don't think the legislature fully understands. And really, in my view, as is shared with the local superintendents, is that this is a better decision made by you as a local board to determine if we need to change graduation requirements, like like some local districts did, Capes Shona Valley, for example, reduced their graduation requirements. We didn't have that same need, but other districts have made changes throughout. And I think the legislators getting involved in something to this extent is far beyond, in my opinion, their scope and and their expertise. And we all recognize that retention, for those of us who've been in education a long time, and it's studied retention. Retention is one of the worst things that you can do for student achievement. Outcomes on retention are really, really poor. So we've been expressing that to our our local legislators, in particular Senator Min and his office, because that came out of the assembly and went into the Senate. So again, that's just some of the the things that we're working on. It is a mad dash, it seems, in in many cases with some of these bills. I'm not sure how many of them are going to get actually read, you know, they're, they've been dealing with so many different things. But there are a ton of them, and I've shared quite a few with you in the past weeklies. But those are just two that I wanted to mention that we're tracking, SB five forty-five is one, that, and AB one oh four, so.
Oh, thank you for that. With that, this brings us to number fifteen, which is the last item, which is adjourned, the next regularly scheduled business meeting is May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. We will not hold a study session on May thirteen. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Done, moved.
So there you go, Victoria, you have Perry and Kelly. Any discussion? Yay, okay, so just as a reminder, though, BB ninety-two hundred, when we adjourn, the board is no longer seated, and thus we have no individual power until we're seated again. Victoria, please conduct a board member roll call, beginning with the student board member provisional vote.
To Hannah.
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. So motion carries five zero, the meeting is adjourned at eight forty-one PM, thanks, everyone.
I turn off the lights as I leave?
Please, check out the trash, too.
The door locks behind you.